The highway is answered.
Welcome, everybody. Today is May 23rd, 2022. We're going to call the Warwick County Commissioners' Board meeting to order. Commissioner Saylor will be in the place.
Sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business this evening is a proclamation 2022-01 recognizing the achievements of the Boonville High School academic team proclaiming March 24th.
May 24th.
I'm sorry. Just put my glasses on. May 24th, 2022 is Boonville High School Academic Team State Championship Day. Can you guys come up here to the front so we can recognize you?
Yeah, this is proclamation 2022-02. Well, we've got a group of very intelligent academically gifted students with us today. With the board president's permission, I will read this proclamation.
Please.
Proclamation 2022-02, the Warwick County Board of Commissioners, recognizing the achievements of the Boonville High School Academic Team. Whereas the Boonville High School Academic Team has been competing in academic team competitions for several years and is currently coached and mentored by Boonville High School teacher Ms. Rachel Reed and supported by the school administration led by Boonville High School Principal, Mr. Mike Whitten. And whereas in 2019, the current year's seniors were competing on the academic team as freshmen, and in that year, Boonville High School earned state runner-up in the state championship academic competition. And whereas in 2020, current senior Noah Gordon, while a sophomore, placed second overall in the state of Indiana under the individual category under pandemic modifications. And whereas in 2021, the current senior class led the Boonville High School Academic Team as juniors to another Indiana state runner-up in the academic state championships. And whereas in 2022, academic team championships held on May 7th, 2022 at Purdue University in West Lafayette, Indiana, the Boonville High School Academic Team answered 19 of the 25 questions in the subjects of Canadian history, politics, and economics. The highest score of any participating academic team participating in all classes in the state academic team championships. And whereas, as a result of the spectacular performance by the entire team, Boonville High School was awarded the Indiana Academic Team Class 2A State Championship Title. And whereas the Boonville High School Academic Team State Champions consists of seniors Noah Gordon, Keegan Bassett, and Emmy Thomas, junior Jillian Miller, freshman Kayden Robley, Garrett Smith, and alternate Alan DeBose. And now therefore, the Commissioners of the County of Warwick, Indiana, in recognition of the achievements of the Boonville High School Academic Team and their achievements in the 2021-2022 school year culminating in the Class 2A Academic State Championship, hereby proclaim the day of Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, as Boonville High School Academic Team State Championship Day. And thanks its citizens and communities throughout the county for joining in the celebration and supporting the academic excellence amongst our school systems and congratulating the BHS academic team members for their incredible accomplishments. In testimony hereof, we have heretofore set our hands and cause to be affixed heretofore the great seal of Warwick County at the County Commissioners Chamber in Boonville, Indiana, this 23rd day of May, 2022, signed by the Board of Commissioners and attested by Warwick County Auditorium with the seal affixed to the proclamation. I'd like to present the original to the Principal Whitten or Ms. Reed here, and I'll make myself a copy real quick, okay?
We'll get a photo.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Roger. Do we need these other copies internally, or?
No, those were just extra.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Congratulations, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, good stuff. Next order of business is our area plan.
We just have one request for an extension of a surety. It's a commercial entrance C 2004 at 2899 Asbury Cemetery Road for River City Tower Construction LLC by Rodney Nicholson, the owner. We're holding $6,645 in escrow guaranteeing entrance construction. They've had two years and four months, and the surety expires June 5th of 2022. And County Engineer Bobby, did you have a chance to review this one?
The dollar amount sufficient, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. I need you to sign that when you get it.
So is this?
This is based on the current one. If they amend the plan, the current approved driveway permit to the new lower volume standards, then I believe they could bring a check and have the board release this funds in favor of the lesser amount for the new permit or build the new permit.
So he would know what that's?
Rodney Nicholson, River City Tower?
I mean, if we can, we've already submitted it to the engineer, what you gave me, the criteria for the low volume thing. I'm assuming since you said that, they haven't sent you anything. Okay, I will reach out to them tomorrow because if we can get it submitted, I'll get this driveway put in right away and just get this whole thing back rather than shifting another permit and doing everything back and forth and part of the money and then the rest of the money or something. All really, that's just what we've kind of been waiting on is to get the low volume.
Right, the design.
Yeah, the design from our guys to get it turned in.
Approve this extension?
We can approve it and let him do his thing.
Extension because it expires June 5th.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the request for a surety, extension for surety.
I'll second.
On it once the new drives, the new plan, he just asked for a lease of this fund.
Motion carries three zero. So you understand all the paperwork and whatever for the new version?
We do. Somebody emailed me something. I don't know who it was from, but I did get the criteria and got it turned into morally to get a design put in. And I've been out every day, so I'll have to get, I'll have to follow up with them later this week when I, when I get a minute to get that and I'll, I'll get it going. I guess we'll send that, we'll get with you once we do that, right?
Yep, file it in our office.
All right. Thank you all very much.
See you, Rodney.
That's all I have for the area plan commission.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Next order of business is items for discussion under our action agenda.
Yeah, we don't have any items, but you just have to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Let's take.
All right. Motion to approve the minutes.
I, I have to abstain.
He was.
He was absent.
I make a motion to approve the May 9th, 2020, 22 regular session minutes.
I'll second that, and Bob Epstein's motion carries two one. One abstain, two abstention.
And now, thank you, Mr. President, under the county administrator items. I would once again like to mention the availability of our Warwick County Voluntary Title VI Public Involvement Survey on this table over here, which helps with our accessibility efforts. So the items I have are the consent agenda. We have county auditor claims voucher reports, May 11th, May 24th, and payroll date, today's date, May 23rd. We received those from auditor office employees, May 17th. Treasurer's monthly report for the month ending April. I emailed that to the board on May 11th. Also emailed the clerk's monthly report for April on May 20th. Mike, our Ways and Measures Inspector, Mike Arnold emailed us the monthly report for the period April 16th to May 15th. Sent that to us May 16th. We have fixed asset notification forms for three different items. Cisco Marocchi MX 250 Cloud Managed Security Appliance for the Emergency Management Agency. Cisco Marocchi Advanced Security Subscription License also for EMA. And then the form for the transfer of the highway John Derbacko to Park Department. Those are all your items for your approval of the consent agenda.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Next order of business is Chair Seaver's County Acquisitions.
Chair Seaver's Warwick County Acquisition Administrator. And Bobby and I have met, and we have been discussing for District 1 Highway Garage Fuel Tanks and Fuel Systems. And this does fall under pursuant to IC 361-12-5. And so we have some bids here that we received via email. And you have, I have everything on there when we received the email and the time. And there's in the blue section a place for you to write as I open these, the amounts. The first one we received was from Wabash Valley Services. It was received 5/9/2022 at 8:41 PM from the representative Mary Lou Parker.
Sure, I think that was 8:41 AM.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm working late these days. I stand corrected there. So Mary Lou's bid with Wabash Valley came in at $41,960.40, and that does include labor. In that email, Bobby, I don't know if you caught, depending on the time it takes to install, where she did say that it does include installation of the systems. And I did call her on that, and she said there might be some charges for electric, to run electric to that because that's not really in their forte.
We have electric going to the.
We have, yeah, in our plans, there's electric going to there.
So we're good there.
They should just be able to.
Okay, so hers does include the installation, but not running the electric to that. The next one I have is from Staffco, which is Steel Tank and Fabricating Corporation. I believe they're out of Columbus City, Indiana. Their bid was received 5/13/2022 at 3:29 PM. They gave me two separate bids. One is for the two diesel tank systems and the two 2,500 gallon tanks for the diesel fuel. It came in at $35,007.50. Their second bid is for the gas tank and the 2,500 gallon gas tank and the gas tank fuel system came in at $16,845.61. So that gives us a total of $51,853.11 from Staffco.
Does include labor?
Does not include labor. It only includes the labor to put the equipment that needs to go on the tank, but it does not include the labor installing it and setting it at our side.
So Sharon, you give us two figures on that, and you only give us one figure on Wabash Valley. Did they just break it out?
They just broke it out into two. So it gave us a total of $51,853.11.
Okay.
And our last quote is from JME Ellsworth. We received it 5/16/2022 at 3:16 PM.
Sharon, where are they out of?
They are out of Milwaukee. This is kind of a tough, a tough group to find people that build 2,500, you know, gallon tanks and.
Especially in this environment.
Yeah, it sure as heck is. Their bid came in at $49,291.83. Does not include labor. And just side note, $1,634.75 of that is shipping.
Was that in addition to?
No, that was included in that price. That's all I have, so it's.
So it looks like Wabash Valley is the lowest bidder, so make a motion to approve based on Bobby's review of the contract and make sure that that bid serves, services all of his needs, so.
Bobby, quick question. Is 2,500 gallons enough for your gas?
Yeah, for, for one district and then for gas out there. I think right now we're on like a keep pool, so they come once a week and, and top it off.
What if we have some type of catastrophe?
I think for the most part, we should still be good out of that.
Would it make sense to put two 2,500 gallon gas tanks in? Same with your diesel.
Let me, let me say, this is going to be in addition. You're not going to reduce any capacity at Boonville.
Correct.
Correct. So this is going to be additional.
Standalone.
It's going to be a standalone, but it's going to be a capacity that we never have. So in other words.
We've got Boonville and we got this.
Yeah, he's not reducing capacity. So this kind of serves as a contingency.
Yeah, I think it's 500 gallons more than what I have at Boonville now.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. I'll second.
Okay.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Chair Seaver.
Okay, next order of business is our county attorney.
Sending over just copies for you to review as we're speaking about the proposed ordinances. The first one, Mr. President, is the second reading for the amended capital improvement plan ordinance 2022-12, which you approved in first reading in the last meeting. This amendment to the capital improvement plan adds the District 1 Highway Garage Project both under the listing of projects and also under the listings of projects costs. And we have, if you would refer to the last page, that we did not have at the first reading, but the second reading does include the numbers from the council's administrator on page nine of the anticipated distribution of revenue records for both 2021 and 2022, direct expenditures from edit and lit and expenditures from edit and lit distribution for debt service. Those numbers are all updated and affirmed from council and is ready for your approval on second reading as ordinance number 2022-12.
Any questions?
Motion.
And again, that just updates capital improvement plan to reflect the District 1 Highway Garage Project.
Okay, sounds. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the amending of the capital improvement plan. Mr. President?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second ordinance is merely a draft. It is not ready for your approval necessarily today. It is the draft of the ordinance amending Chapter 35 of the Code of Ordinances of Warwick County, Indiana regarding the emergency management administration and all the updates and improvements requested from that department. And if you would simply review that for approval at the next meeting, table it. I would just ask your review of the draft and see if you have any questions. And I can certainly, over the course of the next couple of weeks, if you have any questions, answer those.
Makes sense.
But perhaps it should be tabled.
I saw Jake walk in. Is Jake gone?
He walked out. That's what I was looking for.
Help remind me to get this to them. I don't, I don't know that they've seen this, just for them to review it as well.
Correct.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, it was just a small motion. I'll make a motion to table. Mr. President?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
I think I'll be June 13th.
Yes.
And thank you, Mr. President. Next item on the agenda would be a proposed ordinance of the Board of Commissioners establishing the Lit Local Income Tax Public Safety Jail Savings Fund. This is in response to action taken by the county council to approve and appropriate certain number of funds to be deposited into this newly established fund. Once it is created, it's established under the Home Rule statute for the transfer of certain funds derived from lit revenues to be applied toward the expenses related to the planned and future construction of a new jail facility in Warwick County to establish the Lit Public Safety Jail Savings Fund to receive the transfer of those funds and additional funds in the future. The Code of Ordinances of Warwick County, Indiana is hereby amended to include a new Section 37.28 entitled Lit Public Safety Jail Savings Fund to establish the fund for the purposes of receiving funds transferred from said, to said fund from time to time by the Warwick County Council. The monies deposited in the fund shall be for the costs and expenses related to the planning, design, acquisition of land, and construction of a new jail facility in Warwick County in the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. It will be a non-reverting and perpetual fund until terminated by the terms of the ordinance or by enactment of a subsequent ordinance or amendment. And if terminated for any reason, the disposition of the fund balance, if any, shall be determined by the Board of Commissioners of Warwick County effective upon passage, ready for your consideration and approval today under attestation by the old firm.
What's the ordinance number?
15.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-15.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four under my items, it's not necessary. We just got overexcited on our list, and that was already taken with item number one.
Things on here.
Yeah, we did it twice. You have referred to my attention, the approval of a proposed quitclaim deed to James R. and Tegra L. Little of Warwick County. That is in process, but if by consensus you direct me to get that in approval state, we will do that for your execution. You can in fact approve it if you wish.
What's this on? What property is on?
It's a 40-foot strip.
40-foot?
Taken care of for 60 years.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I don't have in front of me that exact location. It's off of Goff.
It runs, it's the fifth Charlton Avenue. It goes straight north off of, dang it, what's across street?
Goff.
Goff, Goff. That 40-foot strip, it goes up quite a ways. They've taken care of it for generations.
I remember now. I couldn't.
And it's Tegra.
Tegra, thank you. But I believe I've got all the information for review and verifying accuracy of a proposed quitclaim deed. And if for any reason I see there's anything inaccurate about, I'll make sure we get it corrected with council.
I'm certainly good with moving forward on that.
I'll go ahead and making a motion to approve the quitclaim deed to Mr. and Mrs. Little pending council's review and drawing up the correct paperwork.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And lastly, this has just popped up, I think, and Roger can maybe help me with it, but we do need the memorandum of understanding updated regarding what is now the Boonville, now Warwick County Farmers Market. I think it's a time-sensitive matter. The update is not anything out of the ordinary. It'll be rather simple. I just have to get with Aaron in the Health Department to determine if he's requiring a certain food permit or not. There's a dispute as to whether or not that's applicable. But if you don't mind directing council to get that in final shape and approving it, I think they're starting this weekend.
June 2nd, I thought.
Or one, another weekend from now?
Yeah, I think so.
Before your next meeting.
Right.
It doesn't represent anything out of the ordinary other than just making sure I confirm that everything's okay with the Health Department.
Very good. Need a motion?
Please direct me to do that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to update the MOU for the Warwick County Farmers Market pending review with council and the Health Department.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Thank you. That's helpful. That's all. Anything else?
Okay. Very good. Bobby, you are up.
Thank you. The first item I have is the 2021 Annual Operation Report for Local Roads, Streets, and Bridges. This is a statutory requirement due June 1st. I have submitted the online, I guess it gets submitted through LTAP now, and it has been submitted to them, but it also needs to come to the board for acknowledgement of an approval. So I just ask for approval of that.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the annual highway operations report.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
The next item I have is the contract for engineering services for the PE Operator 148 with SJCA. I do not know, Todd, if you've had time to review this one.
That was, that was the one you sent.
Last week.
Last week. Yeah, we approved that. That's good.
Okay.
There was another one, wasn't there?
Right, there's another one that's going to be tabled.
Yes, that's been approved. That's been reviewed and is ready.
Okay, and this is a bridge deck replacement on North Steveston Station Road over Pigeon Creek. And this is the design of that. And this is the design of that for an amount not to exceed, I believe it was 195, $195,300 even. So I'd ask for approval.
I make a motion to approve the SJCA PE for Bridge 148 contract.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
Then I have also listed is the contract for Van Reck and Anderson Intersection. It's also for PE right-of-way construction inspection. And I just asked that we tabled that. I did just receive that last Friday. It is still under legal review, and I'm still reviewing the man-hour justifications.
I make a motion to table for our June, to our June 13th meeting.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
And I had one other item I didn't get on the agenda, but the bids were due today for the Bridge 298, Bridge Deck Overlay. It's a community crossing project.
I bet you wish you had a knife.
I had two of those.
Here, Bobby.
I had two of those.
Thank you.
Todd's getting out of it.
Two bids were received.
Probably beat a little bit.
The first one is from Langenberger Burger Brothers. Total bid... $390,700. The next bid is from Regal. For a total sum of $299,086.10.
Who was that?
Regal.
Regal. So I would request that we move forward with a little bidder, subject to the bids being responsive and responsible.
Bobby, were any other companies soliciting?
This was a, yes.
Oh, the matching grant?
Yes, and it was advertised. It was advertised in the newspaper, and I believe two other companies did receive emails just to let them know that it's advertised so that we could solicit.
Okay.
So we solicited at least four, and we received two.
Thank you.
And I know Bobby did reach out. We did reach out to Spencer County to see if they would help participate.
Multiple times.
It fell on deaf ears. I make a motion to approve the low bid of Regal for $299,800, $299,086.10 for Bridge 298, subject to the approval of legal counsel and Bobby's review.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
That is all I have, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there, did the commissioner need to do anything with that Second Amendment to the road broadband? They okayed Steve to negotiate that. That's a done deal.
I think he did last meeting, didn't he?
Did he? Okay, I just had a note on it that was for today from Steve Rowley, so I stand corrected.
I think that's... Rodney didn't stick around, so I think that's good where it sits. Anything, Commissioner? Anything else, Dan?
I just want to recognize two people that I think went above and beyond here recently. Jason Baxter and Dylan, you say Barrett?
Barnett.
Barnett?
Barnett.
Barnett?
Barnett. It depends what clan you're from, Barnett or Barnett.
Okay. Well, I'm from the Vigo County clan, so Barnett. So Jason and Dylan, on their own accord, without ask, just went out and cleaned the War Memorial, pressure washed it, spent most of the day on it. I just think that's just neat that two guys would go out and do that without being asked. And anyway, I just wanted to recognize those two gentlemen for they weeded, they edged, they pulled weeds, and they pressure washed it. And I think with his own equipment and supplies, so I just want to recognize those two, John.
I recognize you for your labor two days.
You gotta recognize Dan was out there too.
So those guys did it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries three zero.
I got 436, Christine.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.